I would like to call the June ninth, 2021 city council meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council member Hutchings? Present. Ruffridge?
Here.
Carey?
Present.
Chilton?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Student representative Cox?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of agenda and consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
Second.
And did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Hutchings?
Yes, I would like to declare a possible conflict with the approval of action memorandum 2021-018 as I am a candidate being recommended for appointment to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. And you will not be voting on that portion of the consent agenda. Thank you. Vice Mayor Parker? Something to add to the consent agenda or to the agenda, excuse me?
I'd like to add for the executive session, Deanne?
I'm sorry?
I would like to add an executive session. I move that an executive session to the agenda as an agenda item 14 to discuss the status of negotiations with Kenai Peninsula Borough regarding 901 dispatch services.
Thank you. Are there any objections to adding that to the consent agenda? Excuse me, the agenda? Seeing none. The executive session has been added to the agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the May 26, 2021 council meeting minutes. New business resolutions, resolution 2021-28 approving the employment agreement between the city of Soldatna and the Soldatna city clerk, Michelle Sainer, introduced by the mayor. New business action memorandum 2021-007 request for an excused absence from the June 23, 2021 regular city council meeting, council member Chilton. Action memorandum 2021-008 confirming the recommended candidates for appointment to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning and Zoning Commission as the city of Soldatna representative, introduced by the mayor. And informational memorandum 2021-003, 2021 scholarship awards from the city manager. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam clerk. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Seeing none. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. No one, seeing no one wishing to speak or approval. Oh, excuse me. Was there any hands raised?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, though there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing no one wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. And next on the item, this time I will present the longest day Alzheimer's Association proclamation to Ms. Cindy Harris. You can hear me.
Long hair last time.
You don't hear very good. Do you have extra things? Okay. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, most common form, is aggressive and general brain disorder that causes memory loss and affects self-care, decision-making, behavior. Whereas there are 8,500 Alaska now living with Alzheimer's disease. And current projections indicate this rate will increase to 11,000 individuals by 2025. And whereas the currently 3,300 unpaid caregiver is providing 21 billion dollars of support to their loved ones with Alzheimer's disease each year valued at $406 million annually. And whereas dementia is the leading cause of death in Alaska and the only leading cause of death and the only even cause of death in countries with unknown treatments for then cure or even remedy on symptoms or slow the progression of disease. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and families can gain access to medications and support services which promote quality of life, fully participate in planning for the future, and enroll in critical research trials. And whereas the city of Soldatna recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to promote awareness of Alzheimer's disease and other dementias and provide care and support to all those affected nearby, improving the quality of life for individuals living with dementia. And whereas annually on summer solstice, the Alzheimer's Association hosts the longest day, an event dedicated to shining a light on the darkness of Alzheimer's and dementia, in which teams around the world come together to honor, strengthen, and enhance the endurance of people impacted by Alzheimer's disease. Whereas it is important to recognize the stories, strength, and efforts of the individuals, families, friends, and care group who are impacted by dementia, as well as the tireless work of the researchers who are seeking a positive outcome. Now therefore, I call Whitney, mayor, to hereby declare June 20, 2021, to be in our city of Soldatna, the longest day.
Thank you.
It's tough for Alzheimer's along with her sister and a few of the others here. And it's pretty tough, tough on everyone. I would recognize with her brother.
Right. That's how you keep it. That's what she do it. Well, we're having an advanced artsy junket on the 19th of June. If anyone would like to come and join us for recognizing the longest day as the shortest walk on the longest day. From there to the sports. And then we'll have a bunch of games and live using artsy junket from 11:00. I hope you can join us.
I will, sure.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Is the seating of newly elected members when applicable? A review of applicants and appointment to city council seat B, partial term ending 10/17/21. We have two applicants. There are two qualified applicants for city council seat B. And applicants were listed on the agenda in the order that the applications were received. Are there any objections to beginning the interview process? Seeing none. The first name listed is Gloria Sweeney. Ms. Sweeney, if you would please step forward to the chair here in front and state your name and address. And you have a few minutes, a couple, five minutes or so to make a presentation.
Okay, Gloria Sweeney, 249 Riverwatch Drive, Soldatna, Alaska. And first of all, thank you, city council members dispersed throughout the room and back to you. I'm sorry. And Mayor Whitney for considering my application for the vacant council seat B. I realize it is a short-term assignment, but in some respects, that makes it a perfect position for me at this time and hopefully a good fit for the city of Soldatna until an election can be held in October. As you maybe saw from my letter of intent, I have been a part of this community for many years and have witnessed firsthand the positive direction Soldatna has and is experiencing as it grows and would love to see that enhanced and supported as much as possible in the next few months. I have no particular agenda at this time, realizing that we have great citizens that are highly active throughout this community, such as yourselves. And my goal is to work alongside you and engage in furthering the position, the positive direction of our community. I am an active listener and I like to be aware of all sides before decisions are made. And as council members, we need to be reasonable and cautious in our decisions. We live in a safe, family-oriented community with a small-town feel that I believe should be nurtured. Just looking at the amazing young people that have flourished in our community is a testament to that. My so-called governmental experience is limited, even though after 30 years in the teaching profession, I feel I have a firsthand knowledge of many of the procedures necessary for projects to come to fruition. As noted in my letter, I am currently on the Soldatna library board and had previously been on the Soldatna cemetery board under Mayor Machiki, which I forgot to mention. That was a lengthy process from basically nothing to fruition. I believe Councilman Carey was mayor at the time that the project was started. And luckily, it carried over into other administrations and was successfully completed. That was an amazing process to see unfold, like a living entity. Every meeting was a new and exciting revelation of options. As a council member for the next four months, in addition to my assigned duties, I will do all I can to interact with the citizens of our community to get a feel on what they are wanting or expecting from this body. It seems that once we start reflecting on our past experiences as we are looking at new ones, we begin to see how one thing kind of leads to another. I feel at this time that applying for this seat is the right decision for me. Do you have any questions that I can hopefully answer on subjects that I may not have covered here or in my letter?
There any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mrs. Sweeney. And I ask this only because of your comment at the beginning in terms of the uniqueness of the four months. Are you declaring that you would not plan to run for a three-year term or for another term by that statement?
I could not really say at this moment. That's why I guess I am looking at the four months as the option to learn what it's all about and see how successfully I could fit in before I could make that decision.
Excellent answer. Thank you.
There any other questions from the council? Seeing none? Oh, I'll go ahead, Mr. Chilton.
Oh, first of all, thank you for applying. It's wonderful to see multiple applicants out here this evening. One of the questions I would have for you is that Soldatna has been exploring annexation for a number of years, as you may know. I was just curious if you could share some of your thoughts on those efforts and what you would see as the ideal path forward regarding the efforts to annex.
Well, I have not, yes, actually. With kind of following along, as I have, I thought that was kind of like sort of tabled at the moment because of all the back and forth that's going on with it. And wasn't quite aware at this point that it would be coming up in the next few months again. So I can't really say right now that I would be totally against it or totally for it. I guess I would have to see where the council is going.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up, Mr. Chilton?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Sweeney. Just a quick question on any potential issues that you've obviously been in this town for quite some time. And is there anything in particular that you have recognized as maybe potential areas that you would want to be involved in bringing forward for improvement? Or things that you particularly are incredibly interested in that you would want to promote from this platform? Maybe just a little bit about, yeah, some areas that you would want to be invested in from a council position?
Right. And I kind of held off on any of that line of thinking, kind of more in line with what Mr. Carey was asking. I see that as something coming up as an elected position. As a fill-in one right now, I would not want to come in here with a full agenda of introducing this, this, and this in four months, which I don't think would be a reasonable timeframe for a lot of that to happen.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, Mrs. Sweeney, for applying. It's good to see you. If you had to point to something that you've seen the city do in the past three years as a positive, what would that be? And then I would say also, what would you see as a negative that we've done that maybe we need to correct that you've seen in the past three years?
Well, in the past three years, there's just really been a lot going on. And I think the city's had a huge job with coordinating with a lot of the things that the chamber does. And of course, you've been heavily invested in the annexation thing because it is a monumental fact that the city per se of Soldatna is tiny. It is amazingly tiny. I think of it almost every time I'm on the road, either KBH or the Spur. Oh, welcome to the city of Kenai. And it is immense. It's like, how did that ever happen? And it seems like we're stuck. We're stuck with this tiny little city. Because as you've tried to annex more, it's just become a big issue. And I don't know, I keep thinking, is there some like totally vacant land out there somewhere that's really close that we could just grab onto? And, you know, most recently, everything we've had to go through with the COVID thing has been, I thought, amazingly well-handled by the city. It's really kept our city safe and still flourishing. And I, you know, that doesn't come easily. And I think all of you involved in that really need to pat yourselves on the back for pulling through on all that. So I think right now, the biggies.
Follow-up? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Sweeney.
Thank you all very much for your consideration.
The next applicant is Eric Hugarte.
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you for all of you for accepting my application. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Whitney for appointing me to the zoning board in the Parks and Recs, something I never thought, I never imagined I would be able to do something like that. I've been here for 11 years. I was only supposed to be here for three months. I grew up in a concrete jungle back home, surrounded by gangs, being a gang member, doing everything that gang members do back home. And I was never happy until I came up here. And when I came to Soldatna, I found my happiness. There was no one wanting to shoot me. There was nobody wanting to do anything. And one thing that I fell in love with was how our community is. People wave at each other. You know, you're at the store, you say hello to each other. It's just beautiful. And you know, and when you go up to Anchorage, you know, I tell people, I just can't wait to come back to Soldatna because people up there, I feel they're real rude, you know? And when you go up there, you know, I've had a couple of people say, oh, the hillbillies are coming to town, you know? But it makes me happy because we're nice people. We know how, we have a small town. And I got tired of not doing anything of, you know, like they call them, those keyboard gangsters where you disagree and you say, oh, I'm not in the, I don't agree with this, but you don't do anything about it. I wanted to do something for our city. You know, like I say, this is the place where I found true happiness. You know, this is a place where I learned how to live. For 26 years, all I did was survive. And in this beautiful town, I've learned how to love. I've learned what true friends are. I've learned how to have a community that loves me and accepts me, accepts me for who I used to be and who I am not now. And I'm young. I want to learn. I want to, I want to get back to this city. When, when I was younger, in my gang days, I created an ocean of evil. And I feel that I have to clear that ocean up by doing good. In the Narcotic Anonymous, in the big book, it says that we have to make our amends. And sometimes we can't, I can't make my amends to the city of El Paso, where I was from, but I can make my amends to this city here. I would like to work with the police officers. I would like to work with them, someone like me, dressed like me. Back home, we don't associate with police officers. I would like to change that. I would like to change things with police officers, become their friends, take a picture with them, show people. Somebody before who was against the law, somebody who did not want anything to do with the law, now is trying to be friends with police officers, is trying to do good in this town. You know, this town has a lot of potential. You know, we have a lot of potential in this town for growth, for other things. Like I said, I have no experience in these four months. For me, would be a good introduction to learn how all of this works. I've done it with the zoning board and the Parks and Recs. But this would be higher and it would be a good experience. And like I say, I just want to help. I just want to get back to this community. And I love this town. If it wasn't for this town, I wouldn't be alive right now. I have eight years clean and I owe it all to Papa God and to this town who has shown me friendship. I'm real big in the NA community. I, I like talking to people. I love talking to everybody, no matter what kind of opinion you have, whether you agree with me or not. I'm old school. I remember in America where we grew up, where if I didn't agree with you, I didn't have to insult you. I didn't have to put you down. I didn't have to badmouth you. That was your opinion. We were all allowed our opinion. And now it feels like everyone is against everybody. And I want to be able there to be able to talk. You're talking about the annexation. You know, I would like to talk to the people that are in the annex. How do they feel? I want to talk to, I want to be able to get together with you guys and talk to them and see their side and see our side. I want to speak for the people. I want to be someone that the people knows that I'm here for them. People know where I live. I live in 116 West Reedow, in the blue house with an American and a Mexican flag in the front. Everybody knows me. Anybody that wants to talk to me or ask me how I feel about things, I'd be more than happy to. Like I said, I would like to start learning from all of you who have already experienced. Mr. Carey was mayor once. He's, he's in the city council. There's a lot of knowledge I could get from him. There's a lot of knowledge that I can learn from all of you and put to experience to later on help out this town. And one thing that I do want to get later on is it makes me sad that in the state of Alaska, with as much drug problems as we have, with as much of the opioids problems we have, there's no one sitting in the drug and council seat. And it's just sad. You know, I want to help out those people like I used to be before. I want to give a voice to people who don't have a voice. I want to be there to speak for them. So that's how I feel. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
Having heard that you said and looked at the list that you've been appointed to some city work, could you give me an example of a particular action or decision in either of those two bodies that they made? And how did you decide how to vote on those, on that issue?
We made a decision on how much clearance should be by the riverbank. And in the grading that goes up, how much feet of light should be in there? You know, we were talking about what would be better for it. We talked about other plants that we don't have to buy, that grow by there, that we could replant and take care of all that boundary of all our, that might erode or protect the little small fishes or the salmon that are coming through. So that's one of the things that we've done. Another one we've done is the dog park has a lot of beetle kill. And that's one thing in Parks and Recs where we were talking about that and I think that we came to a decision. So, you know, the way I saw it is how is this going to benefit our town? How is this going to benefit our dog park? And when they showed the results of everything, yeah, I know a lot of people love the trees and everything, but they're just a danger to us. They're no longer doing anything good. So if they clear it out like we plan to do and what we plan to do afterwards, I feel that the city's just going to love it more. The people who take their dogs to that dog park are going to like it, you know? That's two examples that I could say of.
Excellent. Both are good examples. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Chilton?
First of all, thank you for applying and coming out here this evening. I'd just like to say I genuinely appreciate your absolute sense of enthusiasm and community and desire to give back. It's very evident. I really appreciate that. I guess my first question would be, should you be appointed to the council and are able to serve in that capacity? What would be your number one priority or idea for improving the city and improving the quality of life for the community and those that live here?
Well, like Ms. Sweeney said, in four months, there's not much that you could say, oh, I want to do this and we're going to be able to make a difference. But it would be enough to be able to see.
Sure.
To be able to see things. Like I've been talking to a lot of people. And one thing that I feel that this town needs is a vocational school. You know, and I've talked to a lot of people and there's a lot of kids that, when I got here, I tried to go to AFTEC and live down in Seward, but there were no jobs. And if I had to rent a place or something, you know, there's no work down there. And I feel that if we were to do something here, our town is big enough to where it's the winter time or whatever. We have Walmart, we have Fred Meyer's. If you drive down our main street, now hiring will help want it. I think that our town would be able to benefit from bringing in, bringing in kids who might not want to go to college or don't feel like going to college. And if we teach them a trade, there's a lot of people that are retiring from the oil fields. We need welders, we need pipe fitters, you know? People don't think about it. The groomers, the dog groomers, you know, you need not just electricians, plumbers, but you have to look at Soldatna all like a little mall and look at it and say, okay, we have Tarmas grooming. Well, you know what? Later on, those ladies might want to retire. You know, it'd be nice to show somebody else who has love for dogs or animals how to do that job. You know, open up different trades to help kids that don't want to go to college stay here and maybe and help our town grow instead of getting an education and leaving to Anchorage or to the Lower 48 like they do. It's just one thing.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Chilton?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you all. God bless you.
Having no other applicants, are there any objections to beginning the voting process? Hearing none, would the clerk please pass out the ballots? A simple majority of the remaining councils required for appointment.
Mayor Whitney? The votes are four votes Eric Hugarte and one vote for Gloria Sweeney.
I'm sorry.
Four votes for Eric Hugarte and one vote for Gloria Sweeney.
Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint Eric Hugarte to the city council seat B?
Mayor Whitney?
Mr. Carey?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Eric to the seat B.
May I have a second from Vice Mayor Parker? Call for the vote?
Council member Ruffridge?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
City Clerk Sainer will now give the newly appointed council member their oath of office.
I'll be right with you. Sorry. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Eric Hugarte.
To solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Yes.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The laws of the state of Alaska.
The laws of Alaska.
And the laws of the state of Alaska. And the laws and ordinances. At the city of Sedana. And then I will pay tribute. And impartially. For fun and distress. My duties. As a council member. And best my ability. And that's it.
Welcome aboard. Uh, our next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice. Now, map drawing cycle, the Alaska redistricting board by Peter Torkelson, the executive director of the Alaska redistricting board.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's going to be a tough act to follow. It'll take me just a moment to get the laptop up and going. Oh, there it is. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for having me today. My name is Peter. I'm uh, the executive director of the Alaska redistricting board, which is a long way from KPC. I attended KPC for a couple of years and enjoyed the warmth and hospitality of Sedana. Let's get started with just a brief history. In 1998, Alaska voters approved a ballot measure number three, which changed the Alaska constitutional method for drawing new legislative districts. Instead of having the governor appoint a board, then the governor decide now, there is a redistricting board, which is as independent as possible. Uh, the governor appoints two members, the senate president appoints a member, the House Speaker appoints a member, and the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court appoints a member. To assure geographic diversity, there cannot be more than two appointees from any one judicial district in Alaska. Therefore, we have people from all around the state. Members must be Alaska residents, of course, and they may not run for legislative office in the cycle after new maps are drawn. So no one who's on the board can then run for office in one of the districts which they recently redrew. The board now holds the sole authority to draw new legislative districts and to defend them in the court system. You may recall that your own Senator Torgerson was the chair of the last cycle 10 years ago. The current board members were appointed in 20, August 2020. They are John Binkley of Fairbanks, who's chair, Melanie Banky of Nome, Nicole Bromie of Anchorage, Bethany Markham of Wasilla, and Bud Simpson of Juneau. So why redistrict? We have a plan. It was drawn at great expense 10 years ago. There was extensive litigation. Um, every time new lines are drawn, lines move and people, the status quo is disrupted. So why do we go to the trouble? The U.S. and Alaska constitutions equal protection clauses both require that as near as possible, one person should have one vote. Now, if you live in an area of the state where people are leaving, population's going down, your vote's becoming more powerful. If you live in an area of the state which is growing, your vote's becoming diluted as more people move into your district. Therefore, every 10 years after the U.S. census is conducted, new lines are drawn. And we have a white screen. For reasons I do not know. I'm not sure either. That's the previous screen. Okay, well, I can keep talking if we want. The pictures are cool. Alaska is defined by what I call churn. Economic term. People move in, people move out. I was astonished to learn that on average over decades, 6% of Alaskans leave and 6% of Alaska, of new Alaskans arrive every year, 40,000 people potentially. That trend has gone up and down with the oil boom and bust and so forth, as you can imagine. But it's generally been a substantial amount of people in, people out. That has changed starting about 2012 or so. Alaska's population growth has plateaued. There's been essentially no growth in Alaska in eight years. The past, um, the past, uh, every decade that redistricting occurs, there's been between 70,000 and 100,000 new people to accommodate in the new legislative plan. That's an astonishing amount of growth to deal with in 10 years. This time, we're looking at growth of only 23,000 people, less than 2% of change. And most of those are new births. So for lots of reasons, there's fewer people moving in or more people moving out. Could be the countercyclical economy is doing good down south, so people move to higher paying jobs. We're not entirely sure why, but this is the first time when we will not be accommodating 20% growth, only 2% growth. So there's some unprecedented nature to this, this year's redistricting. Imagining my next slide. The Alaska constitution sets out a very strict and defined timeline. Once we receive official census data, we have 30 days to adopt one or more proposed redistricting plans. That sounds like an astonishingly fast process, and it is. After that, we have 60 days, so 90 days total. The first 30 is adopt one or more proposed plans. The last 60 is to take those plans around the state, show them to people, get feedback, listen to their concerns, and then by day 90, we must adopt one final plan. Last cycle, the board adopted five proposed plans, two that they drew themselves and three which were provided by third parties. They took those plans all around, got feedback, and came up with one final plan. We will be returning to the peninsula probably in, well, we don't know exactly because of the census, but it will be in the fall to show you proposed plans and to solicit feedback. I don't know exactly where the venue will be, but it'll be noticed and we would love to hear from you when we actually have a plan to submit. Now, everyone wants to know, when are you going to get census data and start drawing maps? Normally, we'd be drawing maps right now. We'd be right here with proposed plans. But because of COVID and all of that, um, the data has been delayed. We believe we will receive the data sometime in mid-August till late September. You can read the emails I've received from the Census Bureau on my website and tell for your, figure out for yourself when you think the data's going to show up. It's, it's confusing. So we will start drawing our plans sometime between mid-August and the end of September. That means our deadline for a final plan could be as early as November, say, 20th, right before Thanksgiving, or as late as literally the week between Christmas and New Year's. We're hopeful it's not that week, but it could be that week. After we adopt a final plan, there's a 30-day window when anyone who doesn't like the plan can file a lawsuit against the board over the plan. We, experts tell us we'll be sued. That doesn't mean the board did something wrong or, you know, broke the law. Someone's not happy, they want the courts to fix it. Last time, there was three years of protracted litigation. We're hoping to avoid that this time, of course, but lawyers and money are involved. I'll bet you're off. We have a website, AKRedistrict.org. You can sign up there to be on my email list. I'll email you. Anytime there's new news from the, from the Census Bureau about when the data's coming or anything that, any way you can be involved, we email that list frequently with anything of interest for redistricting. So I would love to have your name on the list and keep you advised. Also, there's a map gallery. You can look at all the current maps. And once we have proposed plans, there'll be more maps there than you can shake a stick at. That's my presentation, and I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, and I'm a government teacher, so I love this stuff, I gotta tell you. I'm interested in the growth collapse and the, what you have there. And again, you show that from 2000, 2010, there was 85, 548. And again, the next 10 years, 10 to 20, there was 23, 151. And what I'm wondering, in the 2000, 2010, was there a significant reduction in the last three or four years? So although the number is high in truth, it was, it was already the collapse that we're seeing here. And so I'm just wondering how marked the 10 to, again, obviously 20 collapse was compared to the previous decade? Does that make sense?
Thank you, council member, through the mayor. The collapse in growth occurred starting in about 2012. So I think it's slide about 16, if you have it on your, in your packet. You'll see a continual pretty steady growth line, and then it, it really crowns after the 2010 cycle, about 12, because we had a growth spike, as you'll notice, in seven and eight and somewhat in nine. Again, countercyclical with the lower 48. The economy down south is doing poorly. Alaska saw a spike in growth, and then that plateaus and then growth essentially stops by about 12 or 13 from memory. And most of that growth is new births as opposed to immigration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chilson?
Um, so this is highly informative. I'm learning a lot. Just for my own understanding, once your final plan has gone through the 30-day window for opportunity to go through the courts and that's settled, I'm assuming the legislator has to sign off on this? Is that correct or is it just adopted as is after that?
Thank you, council member, through the mayor. The board's plan, when it's enacted, becomes the law. And the only way that it's not the law is if a court enju, and if someone files for an injunction against the plan and the court grants that and says, we're going to block the plan pending some change or cure or remedy. When the, when the gavel drops on day 90 or 87, as it was last cycle, that plans the law unless the court changes it. There's no additional sign off required from any other body or branch.
Got it. And then also my follow-up question, if I may, would be, can you provide any detail on, on what safety checks there are in the process to minimize any attempts to gerrymander? Or is that strictly through the 30-day window with the court process?
It's council member through the mayor. The board's intended to be as separate as possible from the political process. That's why you have appointments coming from even the court system and the court's not usually involved at all to create some space essentially. Um, last cycle, the, one of the things the board did to prevent any even flavors of gerrymandering, which this board has voiced on multiple occasions on the record and to me personally, that they want to follow in those footsteps and if possible, do more to keep as neutral posture and to do as fair a process as possible. Similar to the comments we heard earlier, there's a lot of concern among board members about the flavor of the political dialogue right now. They're very concerned that that not come into the board process. So for example, last cycle, Senator Torgerson ordered that the staff remove all party identifiers from board-owned computers, as an example. So many times map drawers will look and say, oh, Republicans live here, Democrats live here. That was not done last time. Couldn't see, there was no data. We haven't come to that juncture yet. We don't have any data at all, but I fully expect that similar measures will be in place to ensure a balanced, fair plan for Alaska.
That's encouraging. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. I, I mentioned to Peter earlier, in 1990, I was appointed to the reapportionment board. Um, and we were, it was representative from around the state. We had Juneau, Sedana, Chuck Robinson was the chair, myself from Anchorage, a person from Fairbanks and a person from Bethel. Unfortunately, following the next gubernatorial election, we were removed from the reapportionment board and the board that was appointed then went on create the reapportionment plan. And once it was adopted, a number of them did run for seats, which is why you see today in law that you can't run for a seat for a district that you, that you created. We had a lot of challenges back then, particularly for rural Alaska in trying to create that, that balance. Um, and I only see it even, and more so because we are seeing the exodus from the villages to Fairbanks, Juneau, the rail belt area. So do we have an idea as to about what the size of a district might be? Do you think it's going to be about the same as we have right now or a little less?
Thank you, council member, through the mayor. Not having my presentation in front of me, I neglected to mention that on April 26th, the Census Bureau provided us with the, the population for the state of Alaska, official, the official population. It's 733,391 persons. And when you divide that by 40, you'll get a fraction, but it rounds up to 18,355 people per district. So the target population will be 18,355 Alaskans per district. That's not voters, it's not citizen voting age population, it's total population, children included. So that's our target for the district size.
Thank, thank you.
Do you have a follow up? Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. And we'll be looking forward to further. The next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? And for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, do we have any raised hands on Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. We will close public comments and go on to item number seven. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak?
Good evening. Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly, Sedana seat. And I was just going to let you know a little bit of what's been going on. And we did pass a budget at our last meeting. There were very few changes to that budget from the original budget. We did pass that with 48 million for the school district, which was, of course, the, the biggest item of contention or usually is. And I was going to share that with the projections that we've been given by finance is we're looking at with at least 8 million coming from the federal, the federal government, which we've received most of, I believe, already, and for COVID-19 funding and an estimated 70% of recovered sales tax for this next year, is it is being projected that we should be about $200,000 over our fund balance policy, which is, is a good thing for sure. Even without that, we were, without the 70% recovery on sales tax, we were looking at a deficit of about 2.6 million. And then without the 8 million from the feds, we were looking at a 7.8 million deficit. So those are some pretty big numbers to look at. Um, on our next agenda coming up, we do have a resolution, Resolution 2021-041. And I mentioned this, it's a refinancing of, of school bonds. And I only mention it because we've done several of those. And we are actually, by doing that, we have projected several millions in savings over the next, you know, 10 to 15 years on a lot of those contracts. Um, the next one is, is there is Resolution 2021-047. This is approving the agreements through the mayor for the 911 center. I mentioned that because Sedana does have one of those agreements on that. Um, and then the third thing is Ordinance 2021-18. The title is An Ordinance Amending Title IV Regarding Borough Elections and Enacting a New Chapter of Code, KPB 4.60, Electing Security and Integrity to Ensure Borough Elections Are Accessible, Reliable, and Secure. And I'm just mentioning it because these are for the machines. What it will be is they'll be testing and giving, hopefully giving the, the public some confidence in the machines that we'll be buying for the elections this fall. I know we talked in length about it last time I was here. We did postpone that for two meetings. And we did that because there were some suggestions from the public that are being incorporated, most of which are more clarifying than, it's not really changing what the code is saying. It's just some clarifying wording, which made sense, and so there, it's being added. And those are the big things coming up. I also wanted to congratulate council member Hugarte. Did I say that correctly? Congratulations on your appointment. And that's. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, and I appreciate it always, when you come and you share with us. In terms of the 911 dispatch, do we hear still dispatch for Girdwood?
I don't believe so. I believe that's Anchorage, but I would have to ask. I believe that's Anchorage.
While I was Borough Mayor, we took two trips to Anchorage to discuss with them that we were dispatching, we're getting no funds from them, even though they were taking it in a tax. And so I'm just interested, and it might be abuse to you, to look into that, to see whether or not Girdwood has been, again, is no longer dispatched through here. And if so, if it is being dispatched, are we being compensated for it?
I very much appreciate that. I would assume we are being compensated for it, because we are also now being compensated at the borough level for all state, all other actions. From what I understand, anyone who's using the 911 center has a contract, including all the nonprofits as well.
Excellent. And second question, if you don't mind. When you mentioned the $48 million, are we funding at the cap for education?
No, the cap is actually closer, it's around $52 million and some change. That is what was asked. So to go on the history of it, we set the floor at $45 million. The school district had asked for $48 million. And then in the proposed budget from the mayor, it was at $48 million, and no one amended that. So it stayed at the $48 million, which is what they said they would like to function on this year. I think that has a lot to do with, they also receive some COVID funding. And so they're able, what's nice is at the $48 million versus the $45, at $48 million, they're able to use some of that funding this year. And actually, we should be looking pretty good for next year, hopefully, as well. If it had been at the $45 million, they would have had to use more of the COVID funding, which is supposed to be spread over a couple of years, but they would have had to use more of that for their general fund, which means less to spread out for next year.
Thank you very much for the service you're doing.
Any other questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. Thank you, Assemblymember Cox, for coming tonight. I read in the paper that there were 13 new positions added to fire an EMT. Can you talk a little bit about that? Was that from the APR dollars, where those funds are coming from, and where those positions are? And once there's no longer APR, what happens then?
My understanding is, is the funding came from when, it all goes back to COVID, and using our fire services for operations that they didn't typically do. In that, they were refunded with a lot of the COVID monies coming from the borough, and then flowing through. And then that is what funded some of those positions, is what I understand. Now, I asked the same question, because this actually came forward several months ago, before budget. And they actually asked to start looking then, and if we would approve that. We did approve it. The only thing that changed is, I believe, Nikiski went from two to four on the budget. So two or three months ago, they were at two, they were looking to hire two. And then that got up to four, which was in the understanding. We knew that was gonna, there was no surprise that that was coming. With that is, I asked the same question of, like CES, they had some board members come in, and I asked the same question of, "How long is this going to last?" And I was told that there should be no mil rate increases through '25 or 2026. And I asked at that point to the board members that were there, is at that time, are you willing to put them in for this short amount of time if that becomes a fact that either we raise mil rate, or we lose those positions again? And they were willing to do that, and that was their board recommendation.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
On CES, are you aware of any discussion in terms of adding on, in terms of the building or the size? I've heard there's been some assessment of the land across the street from CES Police Station, and it made some people think that maybe the borough was looking at buying that and expanding. So are you aware of any efforts to, and I'll say, either move the CES out of the main part of the city, or to expand more where they're at?
I do go to many of the meetings for CES, and I can tell you right now, is the idea is, is they are wanting to create a new building would be the ideal, and that's what they're looking to do. And that, they're looking within the city limits. In fact, I think that might be one of the areas that they're starting to look at. I don't think there's anything in writing at this point, but they do, you know, they're moving toward that.
Any other questions? I do have one. You mentioned $8 million for federal money. Is that ARPA funds?
I would have to ask, I'm not sure. Is, we were told that they were, at our first budget meeting, we were told by Finance that there would be some money coming from, and they just told us that it was, I was told that it was COVID-related monies coming back to the borough. And then at our last meeting, they said we were for sure getting some of that, and that they'd received a portion of it, and then another portion would be coming next year. So I'm not positive.
Okay, so you don't know if that $8 million was the total ARPA, or just for the first 50%?
I don't believe that was the total. I was told $11 million was another number I had heard. So I would have to ask for sure, is if that was designated for two years and received it? I know one of the things that Ms. Harbaugh had said is that we do receive half. So I'm thinking she's thinking this, yes, it is. And why we're not sure is, they don't have the exact number, I don't believe. Or they didn't, at least at our last meeting. And so there would be half, and then 12 months later, I know you got the other half. So that would still be within, hopefully, within the same fiscal year.
I believe they came out with a full listing of that ARPA funds, of who in the state's going to get it, and how much they're going to get. I know the city of Soldatna was at about $990,000 or something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So actually, our Finance Director, Imholt, and I had this conversation today. I think those numbers are based on estimates. And even earlier today, Melanie had suggested that we don't know yet the true final number. She had recently seen an estimate for the city that was in excess of a million, where, as you mentioned, I had previously seen numbers closer to $900,000. So we're still waiting, at this point, for the state to receive the funds, and then instruct the cities on the process for requesting those. And I think as part of that would be the determination of the final eligible amount. Excuse me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cox.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have any one from raising their hand that might be from?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. No.
Moving on to our next item on the agenda, is number eight, public hearings. Ordinance 2021-011, repealing the disaster emergency declared for the city of Soldatna in response to the COVID-19 pandemic introduced by the mayor, may have a motion to enact. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of ordinance 2021-011, repealing the disaster emergency declared by the city.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. My report is, I think we've come to the time, like most communities here in the state, and including the state, that it's time to end the declaration. Things are starting to at least get some semblance of normal life going on. So I think it's time for this to go away. So, public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hands. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on Ordinance 2021-011? Seeing none, do we have any hands raised?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Hearing no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Vice Mayor Parker?
I have a question, Mayor Whitney. What's our percentage of people that have been vaccinated within the city? And maybe Councilmember Ruffridge could help provide some information there.
Well, honestly, the Kenai Peninsula Borough is one that holds numbers for the whole borough, which there are areas that are considered high vaccination rate. I think Homer currently holds that distinction in our borough. We saw some preliminary numbers a couple of weeks ago, that said the city of Soldatna was sitting right at, and surrounding areas, about 16,000 people sits at right about 40% just over it. The borough as a whole is just right under 50%. I think it's at 47. something, at my last check.
That's similar to what I've heard. They said there was no exact numbers for the city of Soldatna itself. They hadn't broken it down.
If I might have a follow-up question?
Sure. Go ahead.
So should we enact this? Does the city manager still have emergency power to enact restrictions? Should we start to see a spike?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker, through the mayor. No, the executive authority that was granted via the initial disaster declaration would terminate with the end of the disaster declaration. Those executive powers were used infrequently, and really at the beginning of this emergency. And so there has not been a need, really, for many months, for me to act quicker than within the normal processes of the council. So yes, to answer your question, it would terminate, and that's not a matter that concerns me greatly at this point.
There any other council comments? Mr. Chulson?
Thank you. Kind of expanding on Councilman Parker's question there, should we see another significant spike like what we had last November? Do you have the authority, if this were to be removed, to enact restrictions on public use of our facilities, like at the sports center or the library, in line with what we've had for the last year or so?
Councilmember Chilson, through the mayor. So I would say yes. As the chief administrative officer of the city, I have capacity to direct our staff in terms of policies on a day-to-day basis. And so if you'll remember, early on, one of the first actions we took were canceling some events. Those were done before a disaster declaration in response to a very urgent need. I'm certainly not anticipating needing to do that. I hope we do not need to do that. So it had not been something I'd been considering doing moving forward. But if there was a crisis that required urgent response at any of our facilities, I would feel confident directing our staff and working with the department heads to make those decisions.
Okay. I'm optimistic as well. I'm doubtful that we'll need that, but it's just encouraging to know that option is still there on the table in case of the off chance we might see some variant or something spike up that vaccines aren't protecting for. So, thank you.
There any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker? Parker, sorry.
No.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Hugarte?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one no vote.
Five, one?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on a five-to-one vote. Moving on to the next item for public hearing, Ordinance 2021-012, conditionally waiving certain provisions of SMC 13.6 water and sewer user charges as it relates to penalties and shut-off for water and sewer accounts that are past due at the expiration of the city's COVID-19 emergency disaster declaration introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I would move to enact Ordinance 2021-012.
Thank you, Mr. Chulson. Is a second. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. One of the actions we took early on was an administrative decision during the pandemic to cease charging penalties for delinquent water and sewer accounts. We stopped doing shut-offs of water service. And in fact, I think in at least one case, someone who had previously been shut off, we went out and turned that water back on. That was happening at the same time the state of Alaska, at one point, had mandated that municipalities take similar actions on a narrower scale. And as was just mentioned with the council's previous decision, as we're nearing the end of this, Melanie Imholt, our Finance Director, brought forward this proposal as a way to transition people back to what the code now requires in terms of late fees on water and sewer charges. The number of delinquent accounts we have right now is actually consistent with what we would expect in pre-COVID times. So there are, I think, out of 1,500 ratepayers, there are 26 accounts that we would consider delinquent with three or more months behind. That's similar to what we would have experienced in any normal year or at any normal time. They're primarily residential. We've only got a few commercial accounts that are behind, and they're kind of in the two-month-behind mode. So really, what we would be proposing is that this council approves some additional flexibility, where we can work with folks over the next 60 days to enter into repayment plans. And those repayment plans would give them the opportunity to not be assessed the 5% late fee if they were complying with the repayment terms, which could be spread over up to a two-year period. So we would reach out with folks, inform the public that this period has ended. We're going to be resuming the code-mandated treatment for delinquent accounts, but we're going to proactively reach out to those delinquent account holders and really come to some agreement on a repayment plan that works for them. It's similar to a proposal that was recently, I believe, put in place and approved by the Kenai City Council. And we are confident that we'd be able to work with folks to transition them back into our normal processes, while giving them some additional flexibility. Ms. Imholt's with us here tonight. If there are any specific questions, then that concludes my report.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hands. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have any raised hands?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Hearing no one wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Ruffridge?
Just a quick question, actually. So I was trying to do some calculations, but maybe failing at it. So if we do a two-year agreement on a payment plan with an individual, but they're also having to maintain their current water sewer bill, which is approximately $100 a month, what, I guess, what do we think the average additional payment on their water sewer bill would be if the agreement was a full two years? Would be like $15, $20 extra a month? Sorry. I shouldn't be able to do that, but...
Councilmember Ruffridge, through the mayor. So Melanie has grabbed a microphone, so I will let her answer that question.
So I think we would want the flexibility to be able to work with individuals to set up, whether it's equal payments over a two-year time, or, you know, smaller payments if they need to, with maybe a balloon payment later on. We would like some flexibility to be able to work with people so that they could succeed in this. As Stephanie mentioned, we do have about 26 people right now that are three months or more past due. However, eight of those 26 are six months or more past due. And so probably the repayment agreements we would be entering into would be with the people that are more substantially past due. I think we have one person that's about 15 months past due, because I think he was, they were in risk of being shut off when the pandemic hit. And so for the people that are six months past due, when we enter into these agreements, it would be about $25 a month extra if we did an equal-level payment plan over two years, plus their current charge. So it'd be about $127 a month they would have to pay. For the individual that's about 15 months, the total payment would be about $165 a month, including the current charges. So I think we would just want to work with them and do what we can to help them be successful while, you know, getting them back on track to pay their bill.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, so if there is a person with, let's say, 15 months past due, and they own their home, and then they sell their home in order to get out from underneath, said that, would that follow those persons, or no?
So it's actually attached to the property. And so it would go with the property when the house is sold. However, the title companies reach out to us every time a property changes hands, and they send us an assessment... they send us an assessment inquiry that we fill out. And we include on there not only road assessments, but also water and sewer charges. And so that would likely get settled at closing. That's generally what happens. However, we've never had anybody this far behind before. But generally, any past due amounts get settled at closing.
Any other questions, Mr. Chilton?
Thank you. For anyone that would be able to confirm financial hardship during that window tied to the COVID pandemic, would we have any ability to retroactively apply the waiver that we did previously or any of our other aid programs to the person to where it's able to forgive that to some capacity?
Through the mayor to Mr. Chilton. My recommendation would be that we not do that. However, I will say that one of the things we did, the finance department actually called every account holder during that program, while that program was available, that was delinquent, to make sure that they were aware of that program. As you might remember, participation was very low. But in the case of the water sewer program, we actually made direct outreach to each of those account holders. Of the eight that we would consider kind of severely behind, the six-month or more, only two of those folks took advantage of that program. But it wasn't because we didn't make them aware of that opportunity. I don't believe that we would be in a position to retroactively open up that program again unless directed by the council that that was something you wanted us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Mr. Carey?
The general notion often, for those who I don't think are very informed, is that government doesn't try to help people. It's just there as a burden. I see the work that's being done here by the city. You know, we normally aim at best practices, which is, again, compared all over the country and different things. What I'm hearing from the city is that they do extraordinary practices. The idea that you would go and call every single person that might benefit from that, that might have need, that is extraordinary. I wish there were people here who could hear that, and I would hope it would change some of that misattitude that government is always against people and just looking to make more money. So I just want to say thank you and thank you and just the attitude. We have the correct attitude to serve people.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Higarte?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2021-012 is passed on a 6-0 vote. We'll now move on to item three, ordinance 2021-013, adopting the biannual operating budget and establishing appropriations for fiscal years 2022 and 2023 introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I will make a motion to enact ordinance 2021-013, adopting the biannual operating budget and establishing appropriations for fiscal years 2022 and 2023.
I heard the second, but, oh, thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an opportunity to present the finer details of this budget. We're proud of the work that went into it. And I want to, again, thank all the department heads and our finance director for their efforts in that regard. We will be available to answer questions if there are any, and thank you very much.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on ordinance 2021-013? Seeing none, do we have any raised hands on Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Nothing? Hearing no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? I'm sure there are some motions out there somewhere.
I think there are some motions out there.
Vice Mayor Parker?
I have motion number two. Somebody has motion number one.
That'd be me.
All right, we'll go to number one. Mr. Chilton?
I just noticed there are sequence at the top of the paper, so I guess I'll go first and jump under that bus. Oh, sorry. The first change I'd like to propose would be addressing our mini-grant program. So as that program is currently structured, we have historically budgeted $3,000 annually for the program, and that committee meets twice a year to evaluate applications for those grants. Typically, we've split that down the middle, so that's $1,500 in funding per application window. And with each award that we grant, we can award up to $1,000 per application. The issue that we have run into over the last couple of years is we've had an abundance of excellent community projects coming forward to that committee. And in the situation where we have two applications that we would fully like to support, we have to choose to either award $1,000 to one and 500 to the other, or 750 to both. What I would like to propose would be to increase our annual budget from $3,000 to $4,000. And by doing so, that would allow us to split $2,000 to each award cycle and therefore allow up to a full $1,000 grant to each candidate if we have two candidates, which is becoming quite common, if those two candidates are something that the committee really would like to support. So to that end, I would move to amend the FY22 and FY23 biannual operating budget document, page seven, mayor and council, increasing line item 001.1100.46300, donations, mini-grant program by $1,000 for a total budgeted amount of $4,000 for both FY22 and FY23, and updating the remaining budget document accordingly to effectuate these changes. That was a mouthful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, is there any objection?
No objection from me. Continue. I was just going to tell Jordan thank you for bringing that forward. I fully support it.
There's no objections, we'll consider this unanimously passed. Moving on to the next motion. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is a lengthy motion. So I would move to amend the FY22 and FY23 biannual operating budget document on page seven, and this is addressing the AML Summer Conference and the Winter Conferences. And I would amend it to increase, amend the travel and training by deleting Sitka 2022, deleting Homer 2023, and inserting Fairbanks FY22, and inserting Sitka FY23. I can do this one at a time or all at once? What's your preference? There's four other parts. All at once. The second part of this amendment would increase line item 001.1100.42100, travel and training. For AML Summer Conference FY22 by adding 1,150, and for a total FY22 budgeted amount of 4,350. The third part of this amendment would decrease line item 001.1100.421100, travel and training. And it would increase by $400 for FY23 for a total budgeted amount of $4,800. The fourth part of this amendment would increase item 001.1100.421100, travel and training for the AML Winter Conference for FY22 and FY23 by $1,450 for a total budgeted amount of $4,350 for both fiscal years. And the last part of this proposed amendment would update the remaining budgeted document accordingly to effectuate these changes. So that is the proposed motion, and if I have a second, I would briefly talk to it.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you. So if this was approved, the total mayor and council travel and training budget for FY22, excuse me, would be $14,700, and for FY23 would be $15,150. And then the purpose of this is when initially the budget was put together, AML had not made changes on their website. And so once we had the corrected information, we were able to actually accurately reflect what needed to be appropriated for these two fiscal years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any council comments? Are there any objections to the motion? Seeing no objections, that motion is passed unanimously. Move on to the next one. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In fiscal year 21, a pop-up tent was purchased at the request of the administration. It was in the budget also in the future. It's not needed. And so I move to amend fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23 biannual operating budget document, page 57, Parks and Recreation, by removing the fiscal year 22 budgeted amount of $1,200 for a pop-up tent for park events for materials and supplies, and that is line item 001.5800. 42200, and updating the remaining budget document accordingly to effectuate these changes.
I have a second, please. Ms. Hutchings, thank you. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Seeing no objection, the motion is passed unanimously. Ms. Hutchings?
Thank you, Mayor. At the request of the administration for the purpose of providing public Wi-Fi access at the Saldatna Regional Sports Complex and the Saldatna Creek Park, I move to amend the FY22 and FY23 biannual operating document as follows. Page 49, Saldatna Regional Sports Complex, increasing line item 001.5600.42301, telephone by $3,675 for a total budgeted amount of $13,275 for both fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23. In addition, page 57, Parks and Recreation, increase line item 001.5800.42301, telephone by $3,975 for a total budgeted amount of $4,575 for both fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23, and updating the remaining budget document accordingly to effectuate those changes.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chilton?
Question for the administration on this one. Is this a one-time spend for the networking equipment to facilitate that public wireless, or is this going to be recurring annual expense to increase network services to that facility through carriers like ACS and GCI?
This would be an ongoing charge each year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Any objection to the motion? Seeing no objection, the motion is passed unanimously. On to the next item. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the request of the administration to address recently updated pricing of equipment, I would move to amend fiscal year 22, fiscal year 23 biannual operating budget document on page 86, Equipment Replacement Fund with the replacement, page 86. Page 25, Police, increasing line item 001.2100.43400, Equipment Replacement Payment, fiscal year 23 by $314 for a total of fiscal year 23 budget amount of $53,765. On page 31, Shop Department, increasing line item 001.3120.43400, Equipment Replacement Payment in fiscal year 23 by $300 for a total of fiscal year 23 budget amount of $8,529. On page 53, Campgrounds, increasing line item 001.5700.43400, Equipment Replacement Payment fiscal year 23 by $90 for a total fiscal year 23 budget amount of $6,364. On page 68, Water, increasing line item 003.5100.43400, Equipment Replacement Payment fiscal year 23 by $200 for a total fiscal year 23 budget amount of $12,592. On page 71, Sewer, increasing line item 003.5200.43400, Equipment Replacement Payment fiscal year 23 by $400 for a total fiscal year 23 budget amount of $14,792, and updating the remaining budget document accordingly to effectuate these changes.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Hutchings, thank you. Is there any discussion? Any comments? Any objections? Seeing no objection, the motion has passed unanimously. There any other motions? Any other consideration on the budget? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Carey?
You said motions. Can there be discussion at this time?
I'm sorry.
You said, are there any other motions? Can I have discussion on this?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We have one more motion that would require to amend the budget document to affect all of the changes.
Mr. Chilton?
I was just going to bring that up.
Yeah, I hope somebody was keeping track of the numbers.
Okay, here we go. So to that end, I would move to amend ordinance 2020-013, Section 2, by one, increasing the general fund amount by $10,050 for a total of $11,504. Sorry, I misread that. And two, increasing the total FY22 appropriation accordingly to $14,302,409. Also amending Section 3 by one, increasing the general fund amount by $10,404 for a total of $11,519,976. Two, increasing the utility fund amount by $600 for a total of $2,189,057. Three, increasing the Equipment Replacement Fund amount by $20,000 for a total of $211,000. And four, increasing the total FY23 appropriation accordingly to $14,303,394.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Hutchings, thank you. Any discussion on that motion, which corrects the numbers in the ordinance? Seeing none, we'll call for a roll call on that.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Higarte? Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Okay, the amendment to the ordinance has passed 6-0. Any other, Mr. Carey?
Is discussion now ready? Is it now appropriate? Thank you. In the last half year or so, one of the most destructive and counterproductive things I've heard throughout the country has been defunding the police. And I find that offensive on so many levels. And so my question to the city manager, and I believe I know your answer, but I want to hear it publicly. Have we in any way defunded the police for the city of Saldatna?
Mr. Carey through the mayor? No.
Excellent. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. And if we're at the point for general discussion on the budget, I want to commend the city manager, the finance director, and all the directors as they put together this biannual budget, our first biannual budget for the city of Saldatna. I know it took a tremendous amount of work and effort. You've done an outstanding job, and I, for one, am very proud of what you've been able to do, and I see added benefits back to the city of Saldatna. So congratulations to you all on a job well done.
Any other comments? Seeing, Mr. Ruffridge?
Yeah, just one brief one. The sales tax collection via the online sales, I also want to reiterate just how much effort and attention to detail has gone into that, and there's more effort to be done on that, and I appreciate the effort.
there's more effort to be done on that, and I appreciate the effort being put in that direction. Obviously, that's a huge transition point for cities and municipalities around the country to be able to recognize that and be able to be able to use sales tax figures in their budget operations. And I was happy to see that in there this year and in fiscal year twenty-three as well, so thank you for that.
And the only comment I'd like to add is thank everyone, staff, all the department heads for doing a terrific job on putting a two-year budget together. Job well done. So we'll call for the roll call.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Hugarte?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Cox?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Motion, I mean, the ordinance passed six zero. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is number nine, new business. And all the new business was covered under the consent agenda. Moving on to item ten on the agenda, Mayor and Council Reports. We did the proclamation declaring June twentieth, twenty twenty-one, is the longest day. In my report, I would like to congratulate Mr. Chilton on his future nuptials that are coming up here in the next short period of time. People call it an institution, and it's a very wonderful institution. And I wish you the best of luck and have a good time on your honeymoon.
Thank you, sir.
And the rest of my comments are, I was fortunate enough to attend the Memorial Day services and events around the area in Kenai, Saldana. And it was a beautiful day. There was good crowds, and everyone was very pleased with how all went. And so that ends my report, and we'll move on to council reports. Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Hutchings?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I went to planning and zoning, and it was a fairly short meeting. But our major discussion was increasing overall our commercial footprint so that there are more opportunities for businesses to come to the city of Saldana. And also, there was a side note about an industrial area which currently resides by the airport. So that was a very short meeting, but it was good input, and we got a wonderful map as well.
Thank you. Item number eleven on the agenda, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any specific items to report. Congratulations, Councilmember Hugarte. Welcome, and I'll reach out to you soon and look forward to an opportunity to meet you and introduce you to some of our department heads and show you around the city a little bit. My only disappointment is that we now have another vacancy on P and Z. If John's listening, I'm sure. We actually have graduated many planning commissioners to the council, and thank you. I'm looking forward to getting to know you better. That concludes my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none. I would make one comment. I remember when I came on the council, we were given a tour and I would hope of the city facilities, and I'd hope you'd be able to do that for Mr. Hugarte. Public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to comment on anything? Mr. Cox?
Thank you. Tyson Cox, Saldana. I was just gonna try and answer a couple of questions that you guys had earlier. The first one was about the services going to Girdwood. I don't have the exact area, so I'm not sure if it goes outside of the borough or not. I will find that out, but we did do Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero three five, which is the agreement with the State of Alaska Department of Public Safety. And so that would be the troopers along our roads and such through there. But I can find out if it's up to Girdwood or if it's just to the end of the borough, where the borough's line is. And then as far as the COVID monies, is it looks like on ours it is estimated, and it is estimated at four million for fiscal year twenty-two and four million for fiscal year twenty-three, according to the presentation we had in our Finance Committee on six one. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I was gonna ask if there was any questions for Mr. Cox. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, do we have any raised hands?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number thirteen, Council Comments. Young Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Hugarte. And since this is my last meeting, I do have a few final thoughts for About So High. Both are So High boys and girls, but got second at state, which I was a part of the boys' team, and it was just, it was great. This year, we, the guys' team has not had the best past. And this year, we got some new coaches, and it was great. Our track and field team got third. And then we had, I didn't go to graduation. I did, well, I went to part of it. I watched part of it. But we were lucky, no rain. Wasn't the warmest day. It was a little chilly and windy. But no rain, so that was good. And then just thank you for everybody, because thank you for this opportunity, council. It was great serving on this board or council with you guys, and it just gave me a lot of opportunity. I'm glad I got to be here. I got to sit here and watch all of you guys work. It's just, it's helped me greatly. Thank you.
It was a pleasure having you, and are you gonna come back next year? If you're elected?
I do not think I will run again because I'm gonna leave it open for the next member.
Thank you. Now move on to Mr. Ruffridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Mr. Hugarte, and goodbye, Mr. Cox. You say goodbye, I say hello, something like that.
Mr. Carey?
I'm real proud of the decision the council made on a new member. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. To Councilmember Cox, it has been a pleasure to work with you and get to know you. I suspect that you are going to, and you already are a shining star, but you will continue to be a shining star and a leader in our state, so thank you for being the leader that you've been. Jordan, congratulations. Another major stepping stone. And next time we see you, you'll be a changed man because you'll be married.
Hopefully not too changed, but thank you.
But you'll be married, so that's part of change. And welcome, Councilmember Hugarte, to the city council, and we look forward to working with you in the next four months.
Thank you. Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Councilman Cox, I'd just like to say it's been great working with you this last year. You know, I can say, just reflecting on my experiences in our community, it can be really difficult to find those even my own age group that actually have any inkling of interest in local government. They're very apathetic, and to see students from our local high school that are not only interested but excited to come to these meetings night after night, it just, it makes me so excited and fills me with hope for our next generation because that commitment to civil service is so fundamental to the success of our country. And it just, your time here speaks very well to that, so thank you so much. Congratulations, Councilman Hugarte. You did excellent tonight during the interview process, and I am excited to work with you moving forward, and I think our council is well positioned to serve our community. And lastly, I've had family in town the last week, and it has been so welcoming to be able to go down to the Wednesday markets and the music in the evenings and just see the life coming back to our town. It is just, it's amazing, and it's past due. And I know there's a lot of effort from so many people that go on behind the scenes making that happen that don't get the credit that's due, and between our chamber and then all the different employees at the different departments of our city that are critical to making that happen. And you, your names kind of go behind the scenes. Thank you. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Mr. Hugarte?
I'd just like to say the same thing as Mr. Chilton about Quinn Cox. It's nice to see young kids interested in what's going on in our city, you know? So I'd like to say thank you for doing that. It gives, like you said, it gives us hope of another generation doing something right. I want to apologize when I cried. I never thought I would, I never dreamed that I would be able to do something like this. So I'm an emotional person now, you know, so I just want to say I'm sorry. It was just one of the proudest moments of my life that Papa God allowed me to have. So thank you for letting me work with you for these four months, and I pray I will do the best job that I can. Like I said, I want to work well for the city, and I just gotta do good. I gotta give back from all the harm I did before. So thank you for allowing me to do that in this town. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, again, thank you to Mr. Cox for giving up his Wednesdays. I'm sure that there were days that he wished he'd been somewhere else. And Jordan, enjoy Hawaii. It's gonna be great. And congratulations, Mr. Hugarte. I'm so happy to see you here. But another thing I wanted to mention, because we are doing so well with Wednesday and the park. Trust me, I see them all dripping through our parking lot all the time. But the other thing I wanted to mention that I thought was incredible, I was talking with Shannon Davis with the chamber, and the Kenai Peninsula Tourism Marketing Group received $410,000 from the State of Alaska to help sponsor activities on the peninsula. So I think we're gonna have one heck of a summer because that is money that has to be spent immediately. So thank you, everybody. Enjoy your summer.
Thank you. We'll move on to item fourteen, Executive Session. Status of Negotiations with the Kenai Peninsula Borough Regarding 9/11 Dispatch Service. AS 44.62.310 C1 is a matter. If discussed in public, the immediate knowledge of would have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city of Saldana. In accordance with Alaska Statutes 44.62.310 C1, the city council may convene into an executive session to discuss subjects that have discussed in public would have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move the Saldana City Council enter into executive session to discuss the status of the negotiations with the Kenai Peninsula Borough regarding the 911 dispatch services. The executive session will include Mayor Whitney, city council members, the city manager, police chief, city attorney Chandler, and the city clerk.
And I have a second from Mr. Carey. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Yes, and we'll take a short break, and then we will come back into executive session. Okay. And I have one last thing to add. For those attending through Zoom, the Zoom meeting will be ended as we enter into executive session, and the Zoom meeting will not be resumed. No further business other than adjournment will take place after the executive session. The adjournment will be streamed live at saldana.org slash streaming. Meetings.
Comment?
Mr. Carey?
I believe we need to work on our connection with our lawyer. From the standpoint, you know, my hearing aids are in place inside my head, and it was very difficult. And there were things he said that I really was trying to understand and could not. And so I would ask, whatever we need to do, we need to have, we need to have better communication with our legal.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay, we will need a motion to come out of executive session. Vice Mayor Parker?
I move we come out of executive session.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Any objections? Seeing none, we are out of executive session. Item fifteen on the agenda is Meeting Announcements. June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Airport Commission meeting at 5:30 PM. And June twenty-third, City Council meeting here in chambers at 3 PM, excuse me, 6 PM. And seeing nothing else before us, we are adjourned.